Meeting in order for December 20th. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Esther, you want to come on?
I'd like to welcome everyone. We have a special guest here.
Thank you.
Esther from St. Mark's.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Councilperson Peterson for this invitation. I'm David Bjorklund. I'm one of the pastors at St. Mark's here in North St. Paul and been invited to share a prayer. What do you brief prelude? So in his explanation of the Lord's Prayer, Martin Luther describes the term daily bread and what that includes. Among the things such as food, water, and shelter, he expands that to include the gift of good governments. And so it is with that understanding in mind that I offer this evening's prayer. Holy God, we give you thanks for the gift of good governments. We thank you for the public workers who labor to keep our city humming, the power and water flowing, our streets clear. We thank you also for those who attend to the daily functions of city governments. We thank you for our police officers, our firefighters and EMTs for their selfless service to our community or their commitment to public safety. We thank you for elected officials for their vision and their leadership. We offer our thanks to outgoing Mayor Terry Furlong, Councilmember Scott Thorson, and Candy Peterson for their years of dedicated service to the people of North St. Paul. May you bless them in their future endeavors. May you also bless this council as they conduct this evening's business. May you bless the people of North St. Paul, and may you bless these United States. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
Thank you. At this time, Jennifer, take the roll.
Councilmember Thorson is absent. Councilmember Peterson?
Here.
It's been an honor, and I thank you. Councilmember Wong?
Here.
Councilmember Cole?
Here.
Mayor Furlong?
Here.
It's also been an honor, and I thank you.
Thank you. Coram is present. At this time, a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved, Your Honor.
By Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
It's a tie vote.
Wow!
It's a tie. Councilmember Wong.
Which one?
Yeah. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those, the motion carries. At this time, we do have our presentations. The first presentation is our Holiday Light Award, and we have the winners here. We had about, Carrie, I don't know how many entries, maybe about 12 to 14 entries, and this is the third year we've been doing this, and they get a prize from the North St. Paul Business Association. I believe it's $100 and $50. It went up this year. Inflation. So the second place winner is... Yeah, drum roll, please. Terrence Furlong. 100? No, just kidding. It is Eric and Brittany Montufol, 2446 13th Avenue, and they've won $100 in a cooler. And our first place winner, drum roll, please. Mike and Mary Anderson, 2540 Schreier, and they also won $200 in a cooler. Congratulations to those two residents. It was kind of fun this year to go and see all the lights and all the lights that are up, brighten up our city. Second presentation, I will turn it over to City Manager Frandl.
Oh, we have a special guest.
Santa!
Santa showed up!
Oh, wow!
Hello!
That's good timing right there.
Oh, boy, do I have a...
Welcome, Santa.
Hello, Merry Christmas! So I was up in the North Pole. Oh, by the way, that's Santa Claus, 1, 2, 3, North St. Paul, behind the big snowman. Okay, yeah. I was making that list, and I was checking it twice, and I was looking at all the work you guys do, and I know some people are leaving. And so I was like, let's see here, there's Mayor Terry Furlong, who's been here, what, 21 years? Wow, that's a long time. Councilmember Peterson, 12 years, and Councilmember Thorson, over 10 years. As I looked at the list and all the nice things you have done, and given up so much personal time, I figured I better make a personal appearance here and really let you know that the sacrifices that you've made have made a difference. And now you can kind of kick back and actually enjoy the holidays. And I'm all about that. And for the rest of the council members, you're doing pretty good. Yeah, you're doing all right. Even you, Councilmember Wong, I know, I'm watching you. All right? Now, Councilmember Cole, as I looked through that list, and, okay, you're not right on the right list yet, okay?
The last name's Cole, I don't know where I'm gonna go with that.
Well, I guess you're kind of used to getting that. No, but you got a couple days, all right? You got three or four days, you can probably swing it around, all right? You're right on the edge.
I'll try.
Okay.
I still believe.
You... There you go, that's all you need, all right? So I just wanted to stop by and say, you know, I'm double parked with the reindeer, but, you know, Merry Christmas and thank you for your service.
Thank you, Santa. Thank you, Santa.
Santa.
Appreciate it.
You got one thing right, yeah? Well, it is with pleasure to give you this plaque. Just, you've been a great steward of the city. You've always pulled for us, the employees that have been here, looked out for the best interests of the city. It's sad to see you go, but we're certainly proud to have you here. And we got this plaque, and it says, Candy Peterson, the mayor, city council, and city manager wish to express you our sincere gratitude and appreciation for the leadership and dedication you have provided to the North St. Paul community as a Park and Recreation Commissioner and as a council member for the term of January 1st, 2011 through December of this year. Thank you for your dedication, December 20th, 2022.
Thank you, Brian.
Absolutely.
Can I say a couple things?
Please do. I'll give this back to you when you're done.
Can I turn... I don't want a face. Should I go up there and talk?
Yeah, you can come up here.
Okay. Am I out of order, Mayor?
Nope, you're not out of order.
I'm both fired. Just a few words, I've been honored to serve this community. I've always made the best effort for North St. Paul. I've represented you state, county, and local level, and I've always been proud of North St. Paul. And everybody knew where I was from, and they knew that North St. Paul is in my heart. And it'll go on. I wish the new council, the new mayor-elect, good luck, but you're gonna need it. I mean, you know, it's tough now. The economy's tough, the city's tough, but we've left a good... We've had a great team up here. I'm gonna miss you guys. They're the veterans now, looking for you for leadership. Terry, I'm gonna miss you terribly. We've worked together for a long time, and I just want to thank the my supporters out there, and I always try to do my best, so I want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Thank you.
I tell you, it's been an absolute pleasure working with you. I hate to see you go. Your dedication to the city goes above and beyond, and I couldn't have done this position in what I've been doing without you, and I just appreciate from the bottom of my heart. This is your plaque, so Terry Furlong, Terrence Furlong. The city of North St. Paul wishes to express our sincere gratitude and appreciation for the leadership and dedication you have provided to North St. Paul community as a Park and Recreation Commissioner, as a member of the Economic Development Authority, city council member, and for your service as mayor of North St. Paul for the term of January 1st, 2019 through December 31st, 2022. The city council, city manager, and staff, thank you for faithfully serving the residents of North St. Paul since 2001. Thank you very much.
I do have a prepared, little prepared statement here. Again, Candy, thank you for your service and all the kind words you said to the council and what we've been doing the last, I don't know how many years we were together with Park and Rec and everything.
We were all together.
We've done a lot of good stuff. So as we come to the close of my final council meeting, as your mayor, allow me to reflect on my term as mayor and my experiences with this extraordinary city. First, it's been an honor and privilege serving the city of North St. Paul over the past 21 years. I began my involvement with the city first as a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission, where I served for eight years. As a Parks and Recreation Commissioner, had the opportunity to work with the commission, residents, and the city council to establish the park fund and ensure long-term funding for the future needs of our extensive and well-loved park system. While serving on the Parks and Recreation Commission, we successfully brought several projects to our community, including a new playground and tennis courts at Silver Lake Park, a rollerblade rink at Northwood Park, as well as updated play equipment at Colby Hills, Tower, Housy, and Dorothy Parks. My years as a Park and Recreation Commissioner prepared me well for my 10-year term as a city council member. Through those busy years, we worked together to construct the overlook platform at Southwood Nature Preserve, install Janey's Playground, a beautiful memorial to one of our young residents, and build two of our city's proudest gems, the Casey Lake Park Pavilion and our beautiful Veterans Park Memorial. As a council member, I welcome two new senior living options for residents with addition of Suite Living and Polar Ridge. Those years also brought the innovative Reflex Medical Business to our downtown and saw the addition of sidewalks around Silver Lake to continue our efforts to connect neighbors and neighborhoods. Following those projects, I realized there is still so much work to do, and thanks to your support, I have served this city for the last four years as your mayor. The last four years have been a whirlwind of development, activity, and challenges. Over the last four years, we've experienced a renaissance in our historic downtown, beginning with the major construction of 7th Avenue that allowed us to update our aging infrastructure and prepare us for our exciting future. A future that brought us new housing with the Sentinel Residence, M&amp;I Town Homes and Anchor View Apartments, as well as an influx of new businesses such as QuickTrip and Beyond Storage. A highlight of my term is the rebirth of our city's beloved Max with the new Max Diner located on the corner of 7th Avenue and Margaret Street. The new Max Diner reminds us of all the great potential when we honor... Potential when we honor our small-town history with reimagined businesses, neighborhoods, and services. This increased development was enhanced by the establishment of our business incentive program to recruit and retain our businesses in the continuation of our popular student-built program to create new housing for our new residents. Thank you for entrusting the future needs of our community and shaping its exciting development to myself and my colleagues on the city council. This enduring spirit is alive and well, as the new council will make important decisions about the redevelopment of the Lilly Building and the reimagining of our community center. But as you know, the last four years have also brought unprecedented challenges for our residents, city staff, commissions, and council. Together, we have weathered a worldwide pandemic, civil unrest, and multiple changes in our city managers. The resignation of our city manager, Scott Dudek, was a very troubling time. The city council met in a private closed session to discuss personnel issues as it related to the city manager. The majority of the council recognized that changes needed to occur and develop a plan with the best interests of the city in mind. Rather than honor those wishes, information from that meeting was leaked to the media, potentially in violation of the Data Practice Act. This information from news stories led to a very stressful time for Scott. Scott felt it would be in his, and he felt the city's best interest for him to resign. Following his resignation, the city fully cooperated with the state auditor and submitted all material relating to credit card charges and receipts for their review. After numerous attempts for a ruling from the state auditor, to this date, we still have no official conclusion to this issue. I'm proud to state that every single city credit card receipt is accounted for. In reflecting on the challenges and opportunities we faced together over the last four years, I am very grateful for the outstanding efforts of the devoted residents serving on the Planning Commission, Economic Development Authority, Parks and Recreation Commission, Arts and Culture Commission, and the majority of the city council. I'm also grateful the efforts of city staff, our neighboring city partners. We've got Paul Ranky here, the mayor of Oakdale. Paul, I want to thank you, especially being a partner as a neighboring city. My wife Sandy, sitting next to Paul there, for her patience and understanding with my demanding schedule. My employer Premier Banks for allowing me the needed flexibility to serve this community, and most of all, you, the residents of this extraordinary city, for entrusting the city where you live, work, and play to my leadership. Thank you for this opportunity to serve you. So I want to thank everybody. Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it. It's Christmas time. It's my last meeting, so we could go different directions on how this meeting's gonna go, but we'll stay with the agenda here. So we did adopt the agenda. We do have the consent agenda in front of us, and I'll turn it over to City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. First up on the consent agenda, A, December 6th, 2022, regular council minutes. B, general claims of $1,419,141.31. Item C, HRA claims, $20,645.78. Item D, North St. Paul Police Department Mutual Aid Agreement. E, Electric Department Purchase of Six-Inch Conduit. F, Public Works Purchase of Three New Fire Hydrants and Supplies to Install. G, Non-Union Employees Cost of Living Adjustment. H, Appointment to Arts and Culture Commission and Economic Development Authority. And lastly, I, Resolution Accepting Donations Through November of 2022.
So at this time, City Councilmember can pull any of the items from the consent agenda?
Just for old times' sake, Candy, you want to pull anything? Just...
No, I've never pulled anything before. I'm not gonna start tonight, so thank you.
Okay, so a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Cole. Second by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those, the motion carries. You know, at this time, what I should have done is, I know Candy has some people that wanted to maybe come up and say a few items, if you want to do that before we go to the open forum, if anybody else wants to say anything about Candy or myself.
They called me right up?
Yeah, I'm calling you right up here.
No, I just wanted to come quickly. I didn't prepare anything. I didn't know I was gonna have to go after Santa Claus or the mayor. And I know my brother was here two weeks ago, and I had some questions. I've got nothing to... No big news here, but I just wanted to say thank you, Terry, for all your service for the city, and also to you, Candy. We're very proud of you. The 12 years on the council, you know, that's been a lot, but it goes beyond that with the Park and Rec and all that. And I know I've given you a hard time several times, you know, called this the Student Council or whatever, but at the end of the day, we are very proud of you, and I know, you know, from my kids, too, all they ever do is talk about Grandma Candy and how proud they are of you. I think right now Casey's running to be the judge at 5th Grade in Cowran, and he's making signs, and I think a lot of that resonates from what he's seen from you moms. Again, all you guys, good luck. Public service, there's a lot to be said for, especially at this level, you know? It's a lot of time, a lot of dedication, and as a resident, I appreciate that, and wish you guys the best, that you've done a great job, and I know you guys will continue to do a great job, and I'm coming mayor, and new city council, too. But thank you, Terry. Thank you, Mom. We've been here for your swearing-ins, we figured we'd be here for your last meeting tonight.
Thank you.
That's it.
Appreciate it. Anybody else want to say anything?
My name is Paul Ranky. I'm Oakdale's mayor, and just a few words, you know, individually, our cities are strong, and then together, we've done really good things for the East Metro. Councilmember Peterson, congratulations and thank you. The service that you've provided over the years, and then our friendship has been meaningful. And then Mayor Furlong, truly, the last four years, as you mentioned in your comments, pretty trying at times. And so the friendship that you've given me, the guidance, the insight, the disagreements on some issues led me to be a better mayor myself, and I hope that in some small way I was able to assist in your growth and leadership, too. So really, it's just a thank you. You guys are terrific. You've got another four years coming up with new leadership and some tremendous developments, and it's gonna be fun to watch. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it. If not, we'll have the open meeting now, and we have one. John Schmal. John, you know the routine.
You've got the NBA buzzer behind there at so many seconds. You'll have family get-togethers, and you still have the buzzer, and somebody will get to speak at the dinner or something, and you'll go, "That's it, blink," and you're done. I would just like to say a thank you also in trying, just as a citizen, a retired person, trying to keep up with what is going on in the city, and you also having to go over all of these situations, and I can't keep up with them, and I don't have a job to take care of before getting that. So it is appreciated for all the people that do take on this job of being on a city council. It's not easy, as far as I can see from afar. Anyway, what I want to bring up is that in the last meeting, you increased the electric rates, and on going home that night, first news on KSDP at 9 o'clock, the leadoff article was that NSP thought that this was not... NSP, God, that dates me. XL decided that this was not the year to raise rates because of the inflation and all the other problems that citizens are having in dealing with inflation. So I thought, that's interesting. The evil corporate giant says to the people, "We're not gonna raise your rates." The extraordinary city with a hometown electric raises our rates. Talk about having the world upside down. And you also said that next year, you're gonna take input from the citizens, or you're discussed. You won't be here, Candy, you won't be here. You'll take input from the citizens as to what a rate increase would cause. Maybe you won't have a rate increase, but I, going back to October, when I had a chance to talk to the COO, I think, his position of MMPA, and said, hey, this is my chance to talk to him. And one of my main problems that I had was that they would never give information about the production from the Whirly gig, the electric. And I talked to him, and I said, "You know this thing is a joke. Why can't you give us the information as to what it produces?" And he said, "If we give that information out, we'd be open to all kinds of other requests." So we're not giving that information out. So talk about open... Yeah. This is open government. Last item is, is the item on the agenda last week, or last two weeks ago, another sidewalk on 11th. Why? There's nothing on that side of the 11th. You got a strip mall, you got a swamp with muskrats, you've got backyards. There goes Ron's efforts when it comes to public works. You got another sidewalk you're going to have to have Public Works take care of. Nobody ever brought up anything and said, "Well, hey, and Ron, you've agreed to plow the sidewalks." I see no need for a sidewalk on that side of 11th when you have one already where all of the activities are located, and that's Target. If you have people starting out on that side of the sidewalk and wanting to go to Target, you got them going across a most dangerous street for pedestrians, and that's a four-lane street without any place to take refuge halfway across the street. I think that it's not needed.
Thank you, John. Anybody else? Is everybody on Zoom? At this time, city business, and actually, we got a public hearing. I'll turn it over to City Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. Item A is spending plan for use of unobligated funds per temporary transfer authority for Tiff District number 4-2, 4-4, and 4-6. Are you gonna discuss this, Finance Director Winnick, or are we gonna have Michaela?
It'll be a joint, a joint effort on this. So first of all, I didn't get up in the public part, too. This is actually a tough evening because we're losing, you know, kind of some of our family members here. But I just want to say that it has been a tremendous honor and privilege to serve you, Councilmember Thorson, Councilmember Peterson, and Mayor Furlong as your finance director for the past 18 months. Your leadership has been second to none. This has been just a great experience for me, and I'm a little bit sad today, so I won't be as upbeat as I usually am. So for this item, it's a public hearing on the spending plan for the use of unobligated funds for a temporary transfer authority that involves our Tiff Districts number 4-2, 4-4, 4-6. We know 4-2 as the Penn Place, 4-4 as Charles Street, and 4-6 as the Helen Street Senior Housing. There was a change in 2021 in the Minnesota Legislature that gave a temporary ability to transfer unobligated tax increment from districts into a pool that could be used to spur on future development. We do have some unobligated tax increment in those three districts. It approximates about $1.1 million that we could use for some development. Again, it needs to still follow the Tiff rules of usage of those funds. If it's not used by the end of 2025, it reverts back to those Tiff districts, and when those Tiff districts expire and/or are decertified early, the funds would then go back to the county for redistribution to all the taxing authorities. So I'm gonna turn it over to Michaela Hewitt with Baker Tilly, and she'll add a little bit more information on the spending plan itself. Michaela?
Thank you, Dan. Hopefully, everybody can hear me.
Oh, there she is.
Hi.
Hello, Michaela, welcome.
I could not be in person to give my best wishes. I could not be in person to give my best wishes and sentiments of, of what Mr. Winnick said. But my, my, congratulations on your next ventures, Mr. Mayor and council members. But I look forward. So I, again, welcome your next ventures for you, and I will miss working with you. But Dan did a really good job highlighting the spending plan before you. And again, we are looking for, this provides more authority to use future tax increments from the district to be able to, to further facilitate redevelopment and development objectives of the city. So this provides additional flexibility for the use of funds that you have on hand. And as Mr. Winnick said, as if the projects do not happen or all of the dollars are not spent, they will revert back to the original district. And I would welcome any questions that you might have on the projects or the spending plan itself.
So at this time, we'll open the public hearing. And it's at 10:07. No, you don't have a, you don't have a clock up there. At 7:03, we'll start the public hearing. If there's anybody here who'd like to address the council, they can do so at this time. And Michaela's here to answer any questions. If not, we'll close the public hearing and we'll turn it back to the council if there's any questions for Michaela. You going to ask questions at this time? If not, do, do we have anything that we need to approve? I don't see anything on there.
Yes, Mayor Furlong, we do, but it's in the city business and, and
Okay, so it's
Action items will be coming up. Yes.
Got it.
Yep.
Thank you, Michaela.
Thank you.
I'll turn it over to City Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. City Business Action Item A is budget amendments for the fiscal year 2022 budgets. And I will turn that over to Finance Director Winnick.
Mayor, council members, this item before you is a budget, budget amendment for this current fiscal year. It impacts eight of our funds that we budget for. And in essence, I look at it as more of a cleanup. It's having the city council increase the budgets, many of them also with increases of revenues. Our, for instance, our general fund, we received and the city council had approved a phlebotomy grant for $40,000. This is getting your authority to actually increase the estimated revenue and increase appropriations or budget side to it. And then also because of the hailstorm that we had earlier this year, we had a tremendous amount of revenue that was generated through permitting. And also on the flip side to it, it increased our expenditures for inspections related. So that's, again, an increase in estimated revenue and an increase in appropriations for the general fund budget. The community service center fund, we're asking for it, an increase in revenue of $20,000 and expenditures of $91,000. When the budget was originally set up, we based it upon, the budget side to it was set up based upon prior year history. This year was a very unique year in which we had to do some temporary roof repairs. We had to do a significant amount of HVAC work that rose that cost up. The budget still, based upon revenues and expenditures, will not use any fund balance still at the, dip into the fund balance. It's just really to kind of clean it up to make sure that we have the appropriate budget authority that's granted by the city council. Many of the expenditures that have already gone through or have been expended have already gone through and been approved by city council through regular actions on the city council. The next item is the electric fund because of the MMP fuel cost adjustment, which was very significant in this, in the summer months. There was increased costs and also increased revenues that, so we would be increasing that budget $1.3 million. The fiber optic fund, we're going to be increasing $8,500. The park fund, we're raising that $17,500. The city mechanic fund, $16,000. There were some extraordinary expenditures that were needed for tools and such this year that were not included originally in the budget. The housing and redevelopment authority, we're increasing that $185,000. The bigger part of it was that forgivable loan that was actually approved in 2021, but was actually paid out in 2022. So we need to, to give the budget authority for that. I'm sorry, not for the HRA. The HRA was due to student built housing, the economic development one that we're increasing 170, $125,000 of that was due to the forgivable loan. And those are the amendments to the budgets. There's also attached the, a resolution with that to amend the 22 budgets. There's actually backup to show you what is, what is increasing. Take it from the current budget, what's the adjustment, and then what's the revised budget. In the general fund, it also has supplied a projection through the end of this year. When we looked at it at the third quarter, we were looking at approximately about $155,000 in surplus. We look a little bit better than that today to the tune of, you know, close, you know, about $340,000 that we should end up with at the end of 2022. So even with these amendments, what we had discussed in the budget process for 2023 still holds true. We're still on track on our 10-year financial plans. This is really just more or less a cleanup to make sure that we have the spending authorities and that they're granted by the city council. So if there's any questions, I will certainly take those.
Any questions for Finance Director? If not, I lost my tab here on my iPad. So I'm trying to find resolution here. And I believe it's, the motion is for the resolution amending the 2022 budgets.
So moved, Your Honor.
Moved by Councilmember Peterson.
So moved.
Second by Councilmember Cole. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. City Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. Up next is the decertification of tax increment financing district number 4-5 for the Reflex property. Dan, we're going to turn that over to you, or Michaela going to speak to that?
I can all, all started out. Again, Michaela can add to it and also assist in any questions that may come up. This item is, is the request for a decertification of the tax increment financing district 4-5, which is the Reflex. It was scheduled to be decertified at the end of the year 2037. There were two notes that were a part of, Pago notes that were a part of this district. They have expired this year. Final payment is in the packet that was just approved earlier. And so we have no more legal obligations related to this Tiff district. So it'll allow us to be able to decertify it early and put it back onto the tax rolls. And if we approve it here tonight before December 31st, it will be included in the property tax calculations for the 2023, for the payable year 2023. And kind of a, just kind of a overall look on the concept of how a Tiff district works that when a Tiff district is created, there's a base value that's put on to whatever the property is. And that is, is, is treated as the normal property tax process. It's the value that is from that base to whatever the new value because of the development creates, that becomes your, your tax increment. And so that overall value now, if we decert, decertify it tonight, will end up being going, will go, that incremental difference will end up being added to in the calculation of property taxes. So there, it's an effort to be able to reduce the local rate, which then lowers the taxes for each and every one of our residents.
Do we know what that rate is now, or what the tax?
What, what the impact is on to it? I don't know that. I can definitely will, can do a calculation. It'll be an, of a smaller incremental difference, difference just because of the fact that this property isn't have a huge net tax capacity.
Any questions for Finance Director? It's a good thing.
It's a very good thing. Yes.
So the motion is for approval, approval of the decertification of tax increment financing district number 4-5 for Reflex. Is there a motion?
So moved, John.
Moved by Councilmember Wong. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Peterson. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. City Manager Frandl.
Next up is the spending plan for use of unobligated funds per temporary transfer authority for Tiff District numbers 4-2, 4-4, and 4-6. We'll turn that over to Michaela, please.
Thank you, Brian. So again, following public hearing, the action before council tonight is to consider adoption of the spending plan, which again, provides the authority to use the unobligated tax increment funds from Tiff Districts number 1 dash, or excuse me, 4-2, 4-4, and 4-6 for this purpose, for the, for the obligation, or for the spending plan. So tonight provides you with the authority to be able to, to approve the spending plan and allow for the use of districts for future projects.
Could you say that again, Michaela?
Oh, I'm sorry. So tonight before you is consideration of the adoption of the spending plan for tax increment financing district numbers 4-2, 4-4, and 4-6, which would provide the, the city with the authority to use the unobligated tax increment funds of about 1.1 million from the spending plan to be able to use for future projects. Use of the funds from these districts for future, future projects to be identified.
Thank you. Any questions for Michaela? If not, motion is for approval of spending plan for use of unobligated funds per temporary transfer authority for Tiff District numbers 4-2, 4-4, and 4-6.
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. City Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Michaela.
Thank you.
Lastly, on the city business action items, is approval of change order number one for 2022 street and utility improvement projects, CP 22-02, CP 22-03, and CP 22-04. We have Morgan Dolly here from City Engineer to speak to this. Thank you, Morgan.
Thanks, Brian. Mr. Mayor.
Welcome, Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, before I start, I do also want to say it's been a pleasure to serve with Councilmember Peterson, Mayor Furlong, and Councilmember Thorson as well. So thank you for your service to the community. It's been great working with you and good luck on everything in the future. This item before you here tonight is council authorization or consider, consideration on approval of a change order for the 2022 street and utility improvement project, as City Manager Frandl mentioned, which is actually that construction contract rolls three different previously authorized projects, 22-02, 03, and 04, together into one construction contract. You may recall that that contract involves work that included improving the public parking lot by Sixth Avenue, just east of Margaret Streets and other streets in that area, Charles, Sixth Avenue. Also, some water main replacement in the vicinity of the high school and also improvement of roads in the northwest portion of the city, 13th Avenue, 14th Avenue, Flanders, and some other smaller streets in the, in that vicinity as well, too. So kind of an omnibus project that was combined for like work to make a larger contract, hopefully achieve some economies of scale. Lots of different work types. And, you know, this change order here, I think, is intended to provide some transparency and opportunity for the council to understand what some of these increased costs are and what they amount to. And also provide staff with spending authority, certainly if the, if the change order is approved. Within the staff report, I did try to break up some of these things into different categories, just for a better kind of understanding of how they come about. Certainly, every construction project has some unknowns and some things that come, you come across during the project. And this project was no different by any means. And, but they can be kind of looked at in three different categories, which I thought were important. And the first category were items that were identified by the city. And so some of that includes streets that were intended to receive some spot replacement of curb and gutter, for example, before they were to be overlaid or reclaimed, or some manhole castings that were in the street that were identified during construction that were bad, or they might not survive through construction. So those had to be removed and replaced. And also in that category is, you may recall, the council directed some additional pedestrian improvements in the parking lot as well, too. So that was a change that was implemented and added into that project as well. So some additional concrete sidewalk within the parking lot there. Another category includes corrective work or things that actually need to be removed and replaced to provide a better underground base with which to construct some of the roads. So while we're doing construction, one of the tests for being able to carry the loads or being able to build a road that will carry the loads that it needs to, once it's done, is called a roll test. And sometimes you do find soft areas, which are usually because of poor soils, clays, or things like that, that may have been not identified or anticipated prior. We do generally have some ability or some anticipation of that to occur, but certainly there was additional quantities identified for that subgrade excavation and correction of the soils included within the project. Also unidentified prior to the project was some water main and utility conflict work on Charles and Sixth Avenue that resulted in the need to reroute some water main and actually some of the homes that were served off of Sixth Avenue. The documentation we had in terms of as-built record drawings showed that they were not served. So we had to add some additional water services to the project in that area. And the final category is work that was identified through construction by adjacent property owners in and around the area. Two property owners adjacent to the parking lot had agreed to and paid money to the city ahead of time by agreement for some adjacent paving, which was right across the line, but on private property. And so they paid their fair share. And also finally, working with the high school project, which was, they're going through the renovations at the time. Based on the timing of construction, it made more sense for our city contractor to extend the water and sewer service to the new addition within Second Street there, rather than have them come back later and basically rip into our new road. So we agreed that they would compensate the city. That has yet to be invoiced, but again, agreed in writing for the school district to compensate the city for all those things, included with the, the services which, sewer and water services, which were on the school's plans, not the city's plans. But again, all of these items that I've discussed here were things that by line item and by unit price work within the contract, we already had. And so it's simply an overage of quantity that was included in the contract. The contractor was very good to work with. They did not charge additional mobilizations or increased inflationary costs to be able to do this work. And so this, again, does result, result in a net increase in the contract of just under $314,000 for a revised contract amount of $1.892 million. I will say that the change order reflects simply the, the quantities that were identified over and above, I think, the estimated quantities that we over and above, I think, the estimated quantities that we already had in the contract. It could be that when we finalize this contract in the summertime, that based on the final quantity of all the work that we've come in underneath this revised contract amount, but the change order and the official consideration by council and potential approval here is simply to identify those specifically identified extra work items that were necessary to complete the project. I will say that we're operating within a bond program. And please jump in and correct me if I'm misrepresenting something here, Dan. But for now, there are several projects that are yet to be completed. So where are the funds coming from to complete this extra work? Right now, it would be within that bond program in terms of the different funds identified for these different things, whether it's water improvements or street improvements. I do know, in taking a look at our engineering progress, we were able to successfully use one inspector for all of these projects together. So I think we're pacing ahead from an engineering cost standpoint on all the projects. And I hope that as we come through all the, end of the projects, with all of the projects, including some that are yet to be bid, that will come within the overall bond program. At least, that's the goal. So with that, I'll stand for any questions the council might have.
Any questions for Morgan?
All of these are, are all of these completed projects?
The Councilmember Cole and Mayor members of the council. So the projects, the contract's still open. There's a little bit of work yet to be done in the spring, final lift of paving, that sort of thing. So the project's not officially completed at this time.
Are there, because I mean, normally, we've always attempted to operate in the scope of not exceeding kind of 5%. And I recognize that, you know, we put a sidewalk in the parking lot back there. We did, we made some of the right moves. Are there key learnings we can take from that so that we can amend what's happening at the time as opposed to having kind of sticker shock at the end?
Sure. And I'll take responsibility for this not coming to you earlier. I think that, in my mind, and these are small items as they appear individually, but they do add up. And in my mind, I did not catch earlier that it was going to be this large of an amount over that 5% kind of planned contingency, as you mentioned. We, we did get delayed by waiting for a contractor's signature. This might have been before you at the last council meeting, rather than now. I know that doesn't really change anything from what you, the point that you're trying to make. But in terms of key learning items, yes, absolutely. We've talked about, especially on the items that are related to, like, for example, curb removal and replacement, or things that, you know, as we go into these projects, that might be a mill and overlay or a road rehabilitation, similar to, you know, a typical maintenance overlay. A percentage of that curb and gutter, for example, is estimated, you know, 10 or 15%. It could be more than that. It could be less than that. So one easy takeaway here is to likely utilize public work staff for, you know, a fairly minor amount of time prior to the project, and just go out there and measure it and get that decision made earlier, rather than later, as opposed to during construction after the contract's been awarded, to specifically know how many linear feet, and then possibly even add, you know, a little bit to that as a contingency, just in case. But knowing that information upfront and not relying on an estimation would certainly avoid that, some of that. With respect to soils, that's a little bit more difficult. We do do soil investigation on most projects. Not typically on mill and overlay or reclamation projects. We don't go down that far. We certainly could. That'll add a little bit of time and effort and cost on the front end. There's always kind of that balance of practicality, right? So it's not, to use an extreme example, it's not practical to do a soil boring every 10 feet, for example, right? To be able to identify every area of poor soils that might be on the part of the project. But can some additional investigation be done on these types of projects in the future to maybe capture that? Or can more allowance for subgrade correction in poor soils be included in future projects? Certainly. We are basing this off of past projects, and I think we just ran into a couple areas that, you know, were more than what we typically see on these types of projects than we have in the past, right? So again, some additional investigation and preparation, and I think estimation from a cost standpoint certainly will help avoid the sticker shock, as you say. There's no guarantee. And certainly, there can be, or there are projects that we don't run into these types of things, or we even see cost savings and the project comes in under, and then, you know, we don't talk about that, right? So I think it's more about trying to capture that, identify and capture that risk ahead of time as much as we can.
Do we have the money, Dan? Are we gonna have to pull anything back to the bill next year?
Well, I think, you know, Morgan spoke a little bit about that. You know, it's gonna have to be, you know, deducted out of what are bonds that we bonded for earlier this year. So the remaining projects, one of the bigger ones that's still out there, you know, is the Seventh Avenue. We'll end up having to decrease the amount of work, once again, for that work.
Because we're not gonna go back for bonding for
No.
this extra money?
No, no. So, you know, to me, from a finance director's point of view, there's a couple of items here that really do need to be corrected in the future. One being that, in item number one, if the city council directed, you know, the award, at the time of the award of the contract for new pedestrian improvements and sidewalk, there should have been a pricing. The city council should have been aware of that pricing. And the city council should have approved that change order at that point in time. There's a couple of items, the items that are in number three, when you're talking about areas that property owners and/or the North High School, that there's an agreement that's there. The agreement should be brought in front. The city council pricing should be given to the city council. And again, a change order should be aware of that. Items that are, that Morgan had spoke about that are really unit pricing, they're pretty much dictated by the contract. And truthfully, that's really what your five and/or 10% contingency is really for, is for the unit pricing components to it. But, you know, Councilmember Cole, you know, asked the question, has the work been done? And I think that really hits at the heart of it, is that we need to do a better job of bringing the information for city council to make a decision in moving forward before the work is actually done.
That was my concern, is that we're hearing this later than we should have. All right. Any other questions for Morgan? If not, oh, go ahead.
Do you anticipate any more change orders with this project?
I do not, not on this project, no.
If we don't approve it, where do we get, and what happens? I won't put you on this, I won't put you on this.
Is that a rhetorical question?
Okay, so the motion is to approve the change order number one in the amount of $313,895.65 for the 2022 street and utility improvement project. Is there a motion?
So moved, John.
By Councilmember Peterson.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Wong. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. City Manager Frandl.
Thank you, Mayor. Reports from the city manager, I think.
Thank you, Morgan.
Probably foremost on people's minds in the departments is the snow event coming up. It sounds like it's gonna be a doozy that they're looking at 11-plus inches, high winds, 40 to 50 mile an hour gusts. And unfortunately, we're down two trucks. So it's, you guys got your work cut out for you. I know you do. Same with electric. I mean, we have still a lot of that sticky snow in the trees, and you get high winds with that. Unfortunately, you get branches coming down or trees coming down. They do a great job of tree trimming, preventative maintenance on the systems. That helps us out tremendously. We also have more energy-saving kits coming in for the public. We're gonna give some of them to the food shelf. We also, as part of our conservation improvement programs through the electric department, which is state mandated, we're gonna be getting two refrigerators for the food shelf. And then next up will be a freezer for them as well. So I think we've already purchased probably four of the ones that they already have. So it's kind of a nice deal for them. We got three guys' approval. We got a couple of new employees gonna be starting. The PD actually made an offer to a police officer, and they've accepted, so that's great. He's really excited about him. The really good-looking on paper, for sure. So they're excited to have him on board. As well as finance, who's gonna be looking at their position that's coming up, the accountant, as well as Public Works for next year. And as well as fire, for, ready for their fire inspector position. So getting ramped up for these positions and getting that out to advertise. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Reports of council commissions and committees. Councilmember Cole.
Not a whole lot tonight. Park and Rec meeting is tomorrow night, 6:30 here in council chambers. Next EDA meeting is January 10th at 3 o'clock.
Councilmember Wong.
Yeah, so the planning commission met earlier this month, and we still have three vacant positions open for commissioners. So we're on the lookout for some new commissioners. The next meeting is January 5th here in the chambers at 6:30. In regards to the Arts and Culture Commission, thank you for voting for the two new members, Amanda Black and Lisa Ritchie. So we're excited to welcome them on board. We're also still looking for two youth commissioners. So just to kind of get young people involved in the arts and culture around town. So the next meeting will be the first Wednesday of next month.
Councilmember Peterson.
Attended my last Ramsey County League of Local Government. They honored me with a plaque. So that was nice. And I'll talk about the Christmas project later. So, thanks.
General Business, Councilmember Cole.
I want to build off of what Councilmember Wong brought up. There are openings on a lot of the commissions. I believe we're gonna have three on the EDA and one to three on the park and rec. So we've got a lot of good senior people that are retiring or their times have come to an end, and 15-year, 20-year volunteers. So there's definitely openings, and we'll move forward with that come first of the year. If you're interested now, contact, it's up on the, it's up now on the way on the city page, correct? Perfect. All right. Just a huge shout out to Public Works. I had, I had residents come to me and compliment me like I'm driving the truck. You guys are doing the work. I want to compliment you for keeping the streets clean. You know, the last round of snow was more of a nuisance snow than it was a whole lot of snow that built up and just the, you know, continuous staying out there. And for somebody to say it to me, I want to make sure you guys hear it. So thank, thank you very much, and thank the whole team.
Councilmember Wong.
Just a big thank you to you both for your service. It's been an honor to work alongside you, and I wish you the best with your next endeavors and your grandbabies.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, I want to give a shout out. I thought Rachel Thompson was gonna be here tonight. We got a lot of, Channel 11 was here for our project Christmas tree. And we serviced 12 families in need, and there wasn't a dry eye in the parking lot when we delivered those gifts. I mean, the, the community is wonderful. I mean, you know, we're kind of a lunch bucket community, but boy, we got big hearts. And there's some money in the wallet. So they, they were very happy. You know, they were asking for cat food and diapers. Well, let's get some fun stuff. You know, what do the kids want? So that was very special to be part of that. I will continue, but I have to probably recruit one of you council people, because I won't have the keys of the castle anymore. So she'd be looking for somebody to help her. But I'll help her. I'll be a little elf next year, so. And I want to, again, thank you, everybody. It's been a pleasure to serve North St. Paul. And I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy Healthy New Year. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd just like to say, again, you know, this being my last meeting together and running business items through, I'd like to thank the council. You know, everybody here, I think we worked really good the last four years. I am excited for you two here. We're has-beens, but the two new, the two veterans here, Councilmember Wong and Councilmember Cole, I think you're gonna provide good leadership for the new people coming in. Like to welcome John Munji, who's here, who's our mayor-elect, Jason Norby, who's here. I wish him luck, and also Cassidy Schwer. I think having a new council here, new ideas, you're gonna go, you're gonna do a lot of good things for the city. And I think the city's in a good position right now. So we're leaving in the hands of you and the council, and wish you all the best of luck.
Don't screw it up.
Yeah, don't screw it up. I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays. Again, it's been a privilege serving the community. And we've done a lot of good things in the last few years. The town, I believe, is going through a renaissance right now. So I think we keep the momentum going. The staff, talked to them last week at their, at their Christmas get-together, and I told them that, you know, we do have a lot of, a lot of new staff also. Not only the new council, but a lot of new staff members. And I think we're in a position right now where you're in a good position. You know, we have a lot of support, City Manager. I, I wholeheartedly believe that you're gonna have all the support from your department heads, and you're gonna do very well. So I wish you the best of luck, so. With that, we are gonna go into a closed session, and I don't have that verbiage sorden, sorden, Soren? Soren in front of me.
Mr. Mayor, I believe what you're looking for is that the meeting will be closed as permitted by Section 13 D05 subdivision 3A to evaluate the performance of City Manager Brian Frandl. And if there's a motion to close the meeting based on that, I think you're good to go.
Motion to, is what Soren said, go into a closed session. Is there a motion?
So.
Moved by Councilmember Peterson. Second by Council, by Councilmember Wong. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries, and we will go into a closed session. Thank you, everybody, for showing up tonight. I really appreciate it.